Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to present to you the second public hearing of the 23-24 budget. The public hearings are mandated by the Code of Alabama, Section 1613-140. It does say that each board is required to hold at least two open public hearings, conduct a hearing during a board meeting, conduct a hearing at a convenient time and place, and publicize the date and the time of the hearings. There are several state mandates and budget constraints that we have to conform to. Fringe benefits are required by the state. Our insurance is $9,600 per employee per year. And retirement is mandated as well. There are two tiers, Tier One and Tier Two employees. Tier One, the board provides 12.59% towards their retirement. And for Tier Two employees, our board provides 11.57% towards employee retirement.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes ma'am.
Back on the other slide about the public date time of the hearing, publicize, how do you guys publicize it other than just post it on like a building? Is it on Facebook? I mean, how do we direct parents to get to that?
All of the schools have been notified, and I'm not sure how they publicize.
I mean, how do the parents know? Because clearly, we're the only one here.
Generally, I send it out to all the schools, and I posted that at the courthouse, which is required in the government building. And usually, all the school secretaries tell me that they posted on their school as well. So I'm not sure if it's on the building.
So is it posted on the school website? Or is it just like posted in the bulletin board somewhere in the school?
The school's secretaries are asked to put them on the door to the building.
But it's not on like the website or anything like that?
I'd have to check with our communications department.
I was just wondering how exactly to publicize other than just posting of the action paper on the door somewhere?
You know, it's just been posted on the buildings.
Yeah, just a lot of the parents don't, you know, visit those places sometimes or find out. We just happened to find out about the day passing by, but...
Really?
Yeah, I mean, we didn't know about that.
Well, thank you for joining us.
We didn't know about the other building either. I mean, the other being, so that's what I was wondering, where do we go look? Where do we direct parents to go look for those types of things?
Usually, the school buildings, or we can certainly check with that communications coordinator. I can check with them to find out.
I think on the website though, but I think it is where you will see level four every seven Tuesday of the month. For years, seven, but as far as this particular one, I don't know.
Okay, okay. That's what I was wondering. I didn't know if it's on the website. Thank you.
The board has to take care of part of their retirement. This year, there was a small increase in the Tier Two requirement, 13% over last year. The board also has leave allocations. The state gives us $120 per day for certified state-funded units only. So this doesn't include our federal-funded units, our other state units, or our local Other state mandates and budget constraints are our instructional support monies. Material supplies this year, the total is actually $1,000 per state-funded unit, but the beginning portion was allowed the teachers to spend the money right when school started, to do that before the beginning of the fiscal year, which is October 1. The second portion, which is $569.15, is the part that will start October 1, which is the beginning of the fiscal year, and go through the end of the school year and through September 30 of the fiscal year. The state allocates our technology money at $500 per state-funded unit. Our library is $157.72 per state-funded unit. Professional development is funded by the state at $100 per state-funded unit. And textbooks are allotted at $75 per state-funded unit. And again, this does not include our federal teacher units and employees, our other state units, and our local units. Those are all funded by general funds, because we make sure all of our employees have the same opportunities.
Are the funds about equal?
Yes, we have them equal for all teachers. Our foundation local match this year is $6.2 million. We have to put in our local fund match to go towards the foundation allotment, and this year, we're required to put in 856,000 more than last year. We're also required to match our capital projects portion. That's $313,000 this year, which is $30,000 more than last year. And our student transportation requirements to take care of our transportation for our students is $2.1 million, which is also up from the prior year at $232,000.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
I noticed that the number of students is down.
Yes.
Why is the amount of money required up?
The amount of money is actually up for two reasons. One, all the employees received a 2% raise, so they're giving us more money to cover the raise. And they also changed the state matrix for teachers. They increased the steps from like step nine through 35, and they gave them additional monies for all their years of experience. So we actually came out of it. Yes, sir.
I was just wondering if at all possible, if you have a microphone, if you could use that so we can hear everyone can hear.
Does it work?
Yeah, it works.
I don't know. They've tried it. We have to make it show. Does that work out?
Yeah, and while that's going too, he didn't use his microphone. He was asking if I could hear him.
Sure, I'm happy to hear you.
Alright, thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
We can't hear you even.
I can talk really loud. This is mainly to record for people, you know, that could make it out here, so I want to make sure everything's crystal clear. I appreciate it. Thanks for your cooperation.
Well, I think when any of us speak, we need to individually turn our microphone.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't mind, it seems like some pretty important stuff, and I'm just trying to share information in the public. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Very important. I appreciate that. And we did cover our student transportation. Yes, to answer your question, the state did give us a 2% raise for all state employees, so that increased the funding from the state, as well as the step that were given to the teacher salary matrix from years nine through 35. They increased their monies based on their years of experience.
So you didn't come out with a statement to the board members?
Yes, that's a whole different budget. You're correct, ma'am. This is a snapshot of our combined budget of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances. Our general fund has a predicted fund balance of 17.6 million. Our special revenues has a projected balance of 2.8 million. Our debt service is projected at 3.5 million. Capital projects are projected at 15.7 million. Financieri expendable trusts predict at 483,000. And a total for all of our funds combined, the ending fund balance is projected at 40.2 million dollars. This is our total proposed budget. We compare our fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '24. Our revenues for our subtotal for '23 is 87.6 million, and our revenues projected for FY '24 is also 87.4 million. To be extremely conservative and consistent, we don't always know what the tax revenues are going to do, as well as the ad valorem taxes, so generally, each year, we keep those very consistent. Other fund sources come from other funds that we might transfer in and out ones to. We do also keep that very consistent. We will have some additional that we will transfer in for debt service, and we will be using some additional funds for capital purchases. Our total revenues for FY '23 were $101 million, and we project our total revenues for '24 to be $104 million. This is at $3 million acres. This is just a pie chart to give you an example of the total proposed budget. Where the funds are sourced are very important. You want your largest portion of the pie to be state-funded, and we're at 47%, which we're very lucky to have that large amount. In our local funding, we're very blessed to have a 32%. Our total proposed budget for expenses comparing the two fiscal years, the majority of the different categories stay the same. Our instructional services are about the same at 36 million. Our instructional support is about the same at 11 million. Our operations and maintenance is projected to be up about $1 million as we continue to upgrade and to care of our facilities. Our auxiliary services are projected to be up $2 million. Our general and administration projected up $1 million. Our capital outlay is the largest outlier, do project that to be up $4 million, as we do have several facility projects that we are planning to work on and continue to work on throughout the year. And our total expenditures for FY '23 projected at 95 million for fiscal year '23, and for fiscal year '24, 103 million. And again, I'd like to provide a pie chart just to show where the different categories of expenses are being used. Our instructional services are the largest piece at 35%, and our instructional support is at 11%. Our instructional services and support are, of course, our main concern, as always, and those two combined are 46% of our expenditures.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
On the first pie chart, where it says other 1% is not federal, state, or local, where would that come from?
We have community outreach projects that we do, and donations sometimes that we get from organizations that we help.
It's not local, but...
Outside.
Outside.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you have an example of that?
Not off the top of my head, but if you sent me an email that you don't mind providing me, I can look it up as soon as I get back to the office and get that to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Total proposed budget compared since '23 to '24, we look at the total expenditures, and as shown in the previous slide, we went from 95 million to 103 million. Generally, we like to back out the capital outlay, because that's not our regular operational. That is, of course, for our capital projects and facilities. Once we back out those allocations, our net expenditures are pretty close to similar to FY '23, with 76 million, and FY '24, we're proposing 74 million. This is a pie chart with our expenditures with our capital outlay removed. Again, instructional services are 49%, instructional support is 15%, which gives us 64% of our expenditures for instructional services and support. Florence City Schools administrative expenses, we compare those year to year. For FY '23, we had 2.4 million, which was 3.8% of our budget. And this year, the Board of Education Services and the Executive Administrative Services both had a slight increase due to our 2% raise and the step raises for the employees. And then our other three categories are business support, system-wide support, and central office services, and these expenses have been trimmed slightly for a total of 2.0 million dollars. And for this year, it's proposed the percentage of budget for administrative expenses to Our total ending fund balances for the two fiscal years, we propose our general fund to be up about $1 million. Our special revenue funds to be at 2.8 million dollars. Our debt service to be 3.5 million dollars. Our capital projects to be 15.7 million dollars. Our fiduciary trust to be 483,000. Compared to last fiscal year, our ending fund balances were 38.8 million, and for FY '24, proposing 40.2 million dollars. That's an increase of about $1.4 million in ending fund balances. Each year, we look at the ADM of our schools, and that is the average daily membership for the student count. We look at years past to see what our trend has been. Although we did lose a few students in '22, '23, like I explained to Mr. Howard, we are actually above in our revenues due to our 2% raise and the teachers getting step raises as well. This is a breakdown of the membership at each of the schools, just to give you an idea of the differences. At the high school, remain the same. The freshman center is only a one-grade school, so that continuously each year has an up and down difference. The middle school, Hibbett, Intermediate, Forest Hills, Harlan, Cueden, and Killian. Overall, our FY '24 ADM that we're getting financed for is at 4,435.9 students. And of course, that student count is what funds all of our revenues, as well as the revenues that we get from the state that are based on teacher units. So if our ADM is 4,435, that equates to a total of 291 state teacher units. And those are 258 teacher units, eight principal units, 5.5 assistant principal units, 9.5 counselors, 8.5 librarians, and 0.75 career tech directors.
Ms. Guzman, this is information based off of the 2023 data from October 20. Is that correct?
Yes, the student count from last school year is what provides our funding for this And this is just trend analysis for the foundation program. Like Ms. Kirkman said, it is based off the previous school year's student attendance. And even though we did have a lower student count with the two raises that we got from the State Department, we were able to come up with an increase of $206,000. The state allocation is broken out into several components. The salaries did see a small increase of 205,000. The fringe benefits went down 6,000, but our other current expenses, which is for our support employees, went up $460,000. Our student materials and technology, library enhancement, professional development, and textbooks, our textbooks are actually based on our ADM, but the other three, four categories are based on teacher units, so those did go down somewhat since our teacher units went down as well. But overall, we have a total foundation program for FY '24, 32.5 million. Our local funds were required to match 10 mils, which is 6.2 million dollars, so the net state funding is 26.3 million dollars. This is the proposed general fund budget, showing that the state portion is 62% and the local is 37%. At the beginning of each fiscal year, as well as monthly and on a regular basis, we always look at our number of months operating balance. The board generally likes to have between two to three months on a regular basis. We're projected the beginning balance for this fiscal year at 15.2 million. Our total revenues are projected at 15.8. Our total expenditures are 55.9 million, which leaves us at year-end with a positive increase of 2.4 million dollars. Our ending balance for the general fund is estimated at 17.6 million. When you take your ending fund balance and divide it by one month of operational costs, that gives us 3.78 months of operating balance in the general fund. We analyze all the different categories of our local and other revenue. We don't often see our TBA and LWA tax money anymore. Our interest income, we're always consistent with, because we don't know what the interest rates are going to do. Business frivolous tax money are generally at zero. To remain fair and consistent, we pretty much keep all of our sales tax, motor vehicle tax, tobacco tax, all stable from year to year. We do have a slight increase in ad valorem, as we do know that the ad valorem taxes do go up. And that's the same for the district ad valorem. For the special ad valorem and the regular district sales tax, we keep those the same to be consistent and conservative in our accounting procedures. Same with our beer tax and our Florence City sales tax. We always budget them consistently, time over time, to make sure that we don't have any surprises at the end of the year. The total budgeted local revenues are 21.2 million for FY '24.
Please.
Yes, sir.
Does the other local lady come up with those things? Have parentheses with that? Be similar to Tammy's to tell the lady that asked about those other revenues?
Well, these would be all local ones, but the ones that are in the other column are usually random things that would come in.
Those would be an example of...
They would fall under the local category.
They would?
We look at our projected employees that are budgeted for all of our funds. We have a total of state employees, we have 291.12 state-funded employees. All 291 of those are certified employees. For other state categories, we have 42.89 units, 19.77 of those are certified staff, and 23.12 are support staff. Our federally funded units are 107.83, 37.28 of those are certified, and 69.55 of those are support staff. And our local units total 145 units, 55 of those are certified staff members and 89 are support staff. Our total projected employee count is 587 employees, point two five. Compared to last year, we have 580, so we're up about seven employees over last year. For FY '23, we did have 35 allocations. This is just an example of last year. This report was actually pulled on July 31st, and it gives all of our allocations that we normally have at this time of year. Currently, we're at FY '24, we should have about 35 allocations, but we currently have 19. We're still 16 short, so the State Department is working diligently to get the rest of those allocations out to us. Some of the important ones that we have not received yet are the Alabama Reading Initiative, our gifted allocation, our career tech allocation, our robotics grant, and our Title III, which is English learners' allocation. But they are soon to come, and of course, will be brought into the budget as soon as we have those speakers available from the State Department. Special revenue funds that we always look for that are large categories are Title I, Part A. This year, we have 1.9 million dollars. Our Title II is teacher and principal training, that's almost $300,000. Our Title III is English language, which, as I mentioned, we're still awaiting from the state. Our Title IV is student support services at $137,000. Our Title IX homeless is to be determined. We have special education allocation at 1.1 million dollars, special ed preschool at almost $40,000, and our career tech basic grant at $100,000. Another aspect that we'd like to provide information on is our transportation at Florence City Schools. We are currently in the fifth year of a five-year contract. We have 29 regular buses with 19 double routes and 10 single routes. We have five special education buses with three double routes and two single routes. This year, our state allocation is 2.1 million dollars, which is wonderful, because we have an increase of $232,000, and all of our buses are air-conditioned and have security cameras. And in conclusion, this gives you a general idea of our proposed 23-24 budget. Overall, we look at where we have been, where we currently are, and where we plan to go. We always maintain a very conservative mindset and allocate our resources to the best we can to serve our students and our district and our community. If you have any other questions or would like any additional details, please feel free to contact me. My phone number is (256) 768-3036. And my email, my name is Lisa Guzman, my email is L G U Z, like zebra, M A N, at florencek12.org. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you so much for being so thorough.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Another good job.
Good evening. At this time, we recall the monthly Florence City School Board. Monthly meeting to order. At this time, we stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Religions. The Pledge of Religions followed by...
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have any communications?
I have no communications at this time.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the audit report for Mr. John C. Watson-Johnson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
School fiscal responsibility...
The School Fiscal Responsibility Act enacted by the state legislature required the Department of Examineing the Public Accounts to set forth uniform standards for legal program compliance audits for local boards of education. The act also requires that any findings be reported to the board without regards to materiality. As a part of that testing, we noted no legal or total compliance findings during our audit of the fiscal year in December 30, 2022. We did identify deficiency in internal control of the financial reporting that's required to be reported under the government's auditing standards. Corrective action plan has been prepared for this internal control filing. We did not identify any findings related to internal control over compliance applicable to each federal or work program that are required to be reported as a part of the single audit. However, we did identify other immaterial internal control findings that have been reported to you in the management comments letter and those have been discussed with your staff during the course of our audit. We appreciate again the opportunity to provide audit services to the board. And we'd like to thank you, your retired staff, and their assistance, cooperation during our audit. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. This time, do we have any comments from the audience? No audience comments. At this time, we have the adoption of the agenda, but. Finance report, I'm sorry. Thank you. Skip right over. Finance report by Ms. Guzman.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to present the July financials for Florence City Schools. We start off with our capital projects. We currently have seven capital projects underway. Our first is our Harlem new office area. Construction began on December 19th and is currently in progress and on schedule. Our second project is Florence High School roof project. That began on April 24th and is currently had a schedule. Our third project is the Whedon cooling tower replacement. We have a bid opening scheduled for September 14th. Our fourth project is Borough Slater gym HVAC replacement that is currently in the design phase. Our fifth project is Florence High School baseball, softball, backstop, and bow territory turf project that is scheduled to begin October 1st. Our sixth project is Florence High School band room that is currently in the design phase. And our seventh is the handy kitchen and HVAC project Phase One that is in the early planning stages and scheduled to begin June of '24. All of the bank statements for July have been reconciled. Our general fund cash account has $28.5 million. All of our combined cash accounts total $45.8 million. Our general fund budget analysis, this is again for July, fiscal year '23. July is the 10th month of the fiscal year, so our target percentage is 83%. Our total revenues in July were 91%, which are up. And our total expenditures are at 84%, which are right on target. Our ending fund balance for our General Fund for July is $26.7 million, compared to last year, $20.4 million. Each month, we look at our local tax revenue comparison. These numbers are year-to-date through the month of July. Last year, our local revenue totaled $20.7 million. Oops, excuse me, this year we're at $20.7 million. Compared to last year, we were at $19.3. Yes, sir.
Is there any way you can zoom up on that a little bit? I can't, I'm just a blur there.
Put it down a little bit because it's on the bottom. Is that okay?
It's better now.
It's hard to fit through this frame this time.
You can do like 110% perhaps.
Some of the financial reports are not all the details of the board. Do you mind if I cut off the top?
Um.
You want the bottom or the top?
Um, just like 100% should get all of it out there. Yeah, you can move it up a little bit, should get it all.
That's at 100%.
Maybe.
But overall, from last year to this year, our local taxes are up $1.4 million, which is an increase of 7.32%. Our child nutrition accounts were balanced for the month of July as well. Our ending fund balance is $336,000. Compared to last year, we were at $1.3 million, which was due to our kitchen project. This is our monthly expenses for July. All bank accounts for July have been reconciled. CMP receivables and payables have been posted. Our payroll and benefits for the month are $4.0 million. This includes our July employees, which are our 12-month employees, receiving their 2% raise and also their step raises. Our next increase in payroll will be in the September month as that is when our nine- and 10-month employees will receive their 2% and their stepping increases. Our operations are $3.3 million for the month of July. And our total expenditures are $7.3 million. And our capital funds are $1 million, which includes different items like technology items, our bond and debt service, projects at Florence High School, projects at Harlem Elementary and Whedon Elementary, and also some minor repairs to Central Office. All of our local school accounts are reconciled for the month of July, and they total $1.2 million for all of the local schools. Our school accounts are reconciled and always included in our financial reports. All of the numbers tied to our financial statements and are available on our website. This is our July balance sheet. It is also posted on our website. This is our July income statement. It has three parts that is also posted on our website. Part A includes the General Fund and the Special Revenue Fund. Part B includes our debt service and our capital projects. And Part C includes our expendable trust and our total for all funds. If you have any comments or questions or need any additional information, this is my contact information. Please feel free to contact me anytime and I'll be happy to help in any way. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Guzman. Again, we'll go back to the comments. Any comments from the audience? No comments on the audience. At this time, the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Shaw, do you have recommendations for the adoption of the agenda?
Madam President, I recommend adoption of the agenda as presented.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Wizard. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Winston. All in favor? Motion passes six to zero. At this time, the adoption of the consent agenda. Dr. Shaw, do you have a recommendation for the adoption of the consent agenda?
Madam President, I recommend adoption of the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a motion for adoption of the consent agenda? Motion by Mrs. Hardman. Have a second? Second by Mrs. Sparks. All in favor? Motion passes six to zero. This time, Dr. Shaw, do you have a personnel?
I do. If you are here to call your name, Huestein, Desiree Martin. Ms. Martin is hired tonight as a CMP worker assistant line. Yolanda Jackson. Ms. Jackson hired tonight as a CMP worker assistant line. Carlos Madden. Mr. Madden's been hired tonight as an assistant for special education at Florence High School. Let's conclude by a moment position.
So, this time we have more comments. We'll start with Mr. Howard.
I don't have any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Dr. Winston?
Sure. Thank you. And welcome. We're excited to have you and all those who were listed. And I just want to do a quick shameless plug. My son started college this semester. He is a excellent of Florence City Schools and he's doing great. And I know that is because of the hard work that you all do. So as a mother, I just wanted to thank you so much for your hard work. We're doing good. So thanks again.
Thank you, Dr. Winston. Mrs. Sparks?
I'd just like to say welcome to the new hires. And the first time this year, I had the privilege of picking up my grandchildren at school and they got in the car so excited about what had gone on in their day. And that's a blessing. And it's also a reflection on each of you. When these children get in the car and they're excited and want to tell their parents of what has gone on during the day, that is because of teachers like you that are reaching these children. And they are our future, so you're touching every part of our future. And I thank you for it and I appreciate all your hard work and I'll be very appreciative of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardman.
I just want to say welcome this new year. Hope you have a good year.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardman and Mr. Wizard.
Just want to thank you and everyone of you for, you know, it's really, really anticipatory time when we start doing schooling, but getting off on the right foot is always good. Believe me, it's not good when you get here bad. We haven't heard very much, so we're going to do a good job.
Oh, I hear what it means. Real men wear pants.
That is true, Mrs. Hardman. Thank you, Mr. Wizard. And thank you for bringing that out. That is true. When we don't hear anything, that seems in appearance that everything is running pretty smooth. I want to say congratulations to the new hires and those that are also listed. And you know, just kind of talking to different ones, it does appear that things are going well, which is a good sign. And we just want to thank you for all the hard work that you do and kind of keeping things flowing. My children are also excited about things that are happening in the school system and you know, that's just a testament of how it appears that things are going well. So just keep up the good work. If we are here for you, anything that we can do to assist, please let us know. That's why we're here. Dr. Shaw, do you have any additional comments? This time, we will have a work session immediately following the board meeting tonight. And our next scheduled board meeting will meet on October the 10th here at 5:00 PM. At this time, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion by? Motion by Mrs. Hardman. Second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Winston. All in favor? Motion carries six to zero. We are adjourned at? Tonight.